President of the Public Works Committee, roll call please.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Here.
Alderman Jacob. Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Catalano.
Here.
Alderman Sizmarski. Alderman Messina.
Here.
Alderman Woods.
Here.
I'd like to clear a quorum. Next is approval of minutes of Public Works Committee Regular Meeting, December 4th, 2018. December 14th, sorry. That is my motion.
Second.
Any corrections? No corrections, okay. Next is report. All in favor? Say hi.
Hi.
Next is report and recommendation. Approval of change order from the street sign installation project with Misfits Construction in amount of $4,960 for the installation of additional poles. That is my motion.
Excuse me.
Good. Go ahead.
I got a question.
Roy Wesley.
On our iPad here, it says December 14, 2018.
I didn't say that. Oh, I'm sorry, 17. Seventeen, you're right, okay.
So, I would like to make sure the record's been changed and it's gonna say seventeen.
Okay. We'll fix that. Thank you for catching it. Alderman Eugene Wesley, go ahead.
Okay, I have a couple of questions. $4,960, how many more poles is this? And where are?
That was thirty-one more poles.
Where are these thirty-one other poles going?
That, no, those are, these are already installed poles, so this just chan, is a change order from the project. When we added the additional poles, this counts for that to install them, so that was the thirty-one that were additional that we reordered.
So, hey.
Go ahead.
So, why, how did we come up with thirty-one poles short?
There were some areas that were missed and we had some areas on GIS, so we had to go back and order additional poles.
And how much is each pole?
Each pole is $130, I believe, for the pole portion.
Hey, let's find out. Okay, right here. I'm fine.
Go ahead, Roy Wesley, Alderman.
So, you said the thirty-one poles were missed on the what program?
They were missed when we originally did the count, when we went out and did the original count to replace all of them in town, they were missed.
So who did this count?
Did the count? Staff did the count. We used, we went out and surveyed and then we went with the GIS information and then those poles were missed.
So with the money that we pay on this GIS system, all the poles were not in that after how many thousands of dollars that we have on this program?
I can't speak to what was done previous. Most of that GIS work was done before our arrival here and it does need to be updated. We've already talked with our GIS analysts and that's a future program to make sure everything gets updated and is in there properly.
Alderman Messina.
And just to clarify, some of those poles were actually special. They were different. They weren't similar poles from different locations. Yes, there were.
There are different specialized poles for certain areas, but those will be put in by Public Works. These were just additional poles that we.
These are different from the special poles that we've heard about?
No, these are the normal poles that we put in all over town. The special poles are for certain areas and those will be installed in the spring.
Not part of the.
Correct, not part of that. That'll be done in-house by staff.
Okay, do I have a second? Go ahead.
I have one other fa, so those special poles are not counted in this price?
No.
So what are, what's the price tag on those special poles and how many were there?
Those are about a hundred apiece and I believe we ordered about fifteen or twenty. Those were for other areas of town that were not originally designated to be done with this project.
So they weren't designed for this, I mean, it wasn't in the proposal for this project?
No, no, there were certain areas that weren't done. These are private streets that we decided to do afterwards.
Go ahead.
Private streets, now we doing private streets? I, I mean, I'm just, I'm just trying to bring this up, now we doing private streets? I thought we weren't doing them before.
Mr. Mers, Mers, go ahead.
They're not private streets, they're like public walkways and areas that aren't dedicated for the actual sign program, so they're.
Okay. Through private streets.
Any other questions? Nope? You've got a second on that. Roll call, please.
Alderman, excuse me, Alderman Roy Wesley.
No.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
That passes. Okay, next is report and recommendation, approval for final request of Misfits Construction for the Street Name Pole Installation Project in the amount not to exceed $21,600. That is my motion.
Second.
Any questions? Alderman Eugene Wesley.
So my question now is, we doing a final payment on this $21,600? Now we just, are these poles installed?
These poles are all installed, correct.
So thirty-one?
Yes.
So we aren't going to see another bill on it?
No.
Go ahead.
We'll see another bill when we get the, was it special poles? Or is that?
Those are gonna be, yes, those are gonna be installed in-house and those are just standard black painted poles.
Okay.
One more question.
Go ahead.
On the total project of these street signs, where are we with these extra poles? It's still under?
Yes, we finished $48,933 under budget.
Mayor.
Is he finished?
Yep.
I got a question, so, I know we had to get some of these special poles because sidewalks and whatnot, and they still have the old signs instead of, we've got a few areas in town, all over town, where we still got the old signs and not the new signs like everywhere else. I don't know.
Right, those will be replaced in the spring. We just can't put the poles in now because the ground is frozen.
Is all these areas getting the new white with black trim signs all over Dominion, Georgetown?
Georgetown is, I don't believe Dominion was on the list to do.
Yeah, Georgetown, we're talking about the Parkway, the City Parkway, so.
Correct, yeah, those were originally city-installed signs, so that's why they're being swapped out.
Right. Any other questions? Alderman Sorrentino.
There may be some additional signs coming at you within our last committee meeting for Streetscapes and as far as public safety goes, there were some signs removed that had to do with safety reasons and Matt's looking into it, which may cause more poles to be put up, so nobody goes into sticker shot down the road if there's another half a dozen poles that go up.
Right, I think most of the signs you were referring to would go on the existing poles, so I don't think that should be an issue with those.
Perfect. Are the existing poles, I'm sorry, are the existing poles painted the same color as the new poles?
Yes.
Perfect, thank you.
Mayor.
Just a follow-up on the signs, so, how many of those old green signs that we have in town, just out of curiosity, are supposedly private or whatever, shouldn't they, they're all in Wood Dale, shouldn't they all be black and white? I, I mean, what are we talking about, ten, twenty signs?
Yeah, it was a very small number, so the ones that are actually we're replacing were for those areas where they're sidewalked or it's not an actual street, but they were signs that were maintained by the city. So, the thought was to put in these cheaper poles and not spend, you know, large amounts of money installing these.
Right, so, I don't know, at some point, I'd like to know how many signs we still have that are green.
Are we talking about the unincorporated areas?
Unincorporated is unincorporated, I mean, people are actually residents that have water bills and garbage and all that stuff and there's a handful of signs and I can't believe we're not changing five, ten signs.
Yeah, those will be changed out in the spring when we do the poles, so.
Alderman Art Woods.
Why would we put up a cheaper pole? Why would we not just use the same pole?
Go ahead.
Some of the locations aren't street signs, they're like, half street signs, half pedestrian signs, but they were street signs, but not on regular street poles. So it was, it's like a hybrid sign. It's, it's weird.
So what is the pole gonna be, though?
It's an ornamental black pole. It's, it's an ornamental black pole. It's of smaller scale than the other.
Yeah, I didn't want, like, we throw.
Yeah, no, it's not.
It's a nice-looking pole.
Okay, thank you. I'm done.
Okay, any more questions? So we have a second. Roll call, please.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
And that passes. Next is approval of change of order one and two with R. W. Dunman for the Potter Street Beautification Project to reduce, to reduce the contract amount from $307,761.40 to $248,538.30. That is my motion.
Second.
Any questions? Go ahead, Alderman Messina.
I just wanted to get some clarity. I know we budgeted $307,000 for Phase One. This did not include Phase Two, which I know is in the CIP tonight, correct?
That's correct.
Go ahead.
And so the, we did not print any vegetation, any grasses in first phase. Some of this sixty grand that we've saved on this project goes back into the general fund and we have to reallocate for Phase Two, which is in the CIP tonight? Is that accurate?
Mr. Mers, go ahead.
Alderman Messina is going to kill me, but that is not accurate. What it is, is it's a contractual savings of the difference there, but the 307 was actually way over budget from what we had budgeted for. We came in under on the bid, but what we budgeted for, this was over what we budgeted for. So this brings us back closer to the original budget amount, but still actually over our original budget amount.
So. So I've gotten three amounts. I have 300 in the CIP. I have 307 on the piece of paper.
300 in the CIP.
248 that's listed here as the final, so which number? What number do I go by? Because I was told there was a savings from what we budgeted, which got me excited, of course, because we desperately need to finish that street with the Phase Two, which we're gonna talk about tonight, so if you're telling me there's no savings, well then.
Well, there's also, there's maybe you're referencing the ComEd component of that project, which we.
That was taken out of 307. I, you guys.
That's what I mean.
You gave me the zip drive, yeah. I saw the zip drive, that did not include this 75 that we had for the ComEd Transformer. That was taken out of the three options that included the vegetation.
Okay, well, yeah, the, the 307 is not, and 300 is not what Potter Street was budgeted for, so.
Go ahead, Mr. Wilson.
Go ahead. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, so in last year's CIP, the Potter Street Project was budgeted for $265,000, which was inclusive of the construction and the, what ultimately wound up being the HR Green Services for the project. So if you take out, was it 248 as the change order two? The HR Green Services that were paid for in this current fiscal year were approximately $17,000. So if you add those two together, you get to $265,000, which is pretty much what was budgeted for and there was a little bit in the preceding fiscal year with design work and things of that nature, so, all in the project prior fiscal year, which would have been fiscal '17.
Not part of this number, not. Not part of this 307 that we had listed in the CIP.
Correct, yeah, that was the bid result number for RW Dunman.
Separate, because you're talking about another separate fiscal year, so I don't want to compare it to this 307 because that's completely separate bucket of money that we're talking about.
Correct.
Correct? Okay, so, if we're just talking about the 307, right? You're telling me that 248 was budgeted, what, I guess, and now you've talked about three numbers, so I just want, I have 248, I have $17,000 for HR Green, I had 307, and I have 300. I need to know what is the net savings of what we've budgeted versus what this project finally came in at? That's what I'm hoping to accomplish.
Sure, so in the current fiscal year, based on the budget number of 265, which was, is what was approved in last year's CIP, the change order came in at 248 and change, and then HR Green invoices for this year were $17,000. So if you add 248 plus 17.
Two 17.
My math is 265.
248, yep, okay.
And the budget was 265. So, pretty much, I mean, within a couple hundred dollars of exactly what was budgeted is what was ultimately spent in this fiscal year on the project.
Follow-up.
Yeah, I, maybe I'm just confused. We sat together three days ago and we said, everyone said that there was a savings, so you're telling me that when this was budgeted, it was not the 300,000, it was 248? So I was given wrong information, am I correct?
Well, the savings is relative to the bid that was received from RW Dunman. They said it was gonna cost $307,000, or, yeah, 307.
Which is what we budgeted. What was in the budget?
265.
265?
Yeah.
Okay.
Came in at 307.
Their quote came in at 307?
Correct.
Okay.
Ultimately, if this change order gets approved tonight, uh, change orders one and two get approved tonight, that'll reduce their final all-in number to 248 and change. So the savings, there's the $60,000 of savings relative to their bid. So once they actually got out in the field and performed all the work, they save $60,000. So there's, there's that savings between the bid and what the ultimate final.
What was what we approved? That's 248 with this council approved or 307?
We approved 307. We approved 307.
We approved the 307 as the bid? Okay, that's what I'm saying. I'd like my fellow councilmen to understand that we, we set aside 307. All the other numbers I don't, now we're at five numbers, but if we approve 307, well, we approved 307 and it came in and we finished at this, I don't want to be penalized asking for a little bit more money with the savings to finish off that project. That was the whole point of this conversation. But if my, my fellow colleagues here all approved 307, I don't want you guys saying that, oh, 248, it's 307 is what was approved of there. Am I, am I accurate?
Yeah, correct.
Okay, that's all, that's.
Mayor.
Just want to make a quick comment. So we approved the 307 unfortunately because all the other bids came in higher, and this was the cheapest bid.
Right.
So, if we could've stuck to our guns and said, well, we only have 265 budgeted, cancel the project. We basically then went forward, it's, so now it works out that, you know, we came in with, within budget. Nobody likes to, you know, he's gotta come up with that money somewhere, so. It's not like it's.
You know what I'm saying? I don't want to, I don't want to spend too much time. I'm just trying to make a point. It's in the CIP, we can talk about it later, we can talk about it when Phase Two comes up, I just, it happens all the time, we come under budget. I don't want this to be like, this is some special hurrah that needs to be deserved, it happens often, thankfully, to great staff and planning. It happens, but I just want to make sure that's clear on the savings that was there. That's it, we don't have to talk about it anymore, I get it.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
No, I.
You good?
I'm good.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
No, that's all right, because I want to talk about it, so, don't think that it's under budget, though.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Next is approval of final payment request for RW Dunman for the Potter Street Beautification in the amount not to exceed $6,000. That is my motion.
So move.
Any questions? Alderman Eugene Wesley.
So, what was? So the change orders were there, and now we doing final payment of not to exceed $6,000? So wasn't, wouldn't that change order be affected with this or no? Yeah, I'm reading, no.
Right, basically this is for bookkeeping purposes to be able to lower the contract amount and then pay out the final amount, so everything's then unencumbered within the budget, so that $60,000 is not hanging out there then.
And what is?
Go ahead.
What, what is the retain that we're holding back on this project?
All retainage will be done because all the work has been completed.
There's no retainage left?
Not for the beautification portion, there's not, because all that was done was some curb and grass. For the street portion, there's a two-year maintenance bond.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
That passes. Items to consider at future meetings, there's engineering standards, March 22nd, and urban park road streetlights coming up winter, spring. Any other items to consider? Can I move to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
We adjourned.
I'd like to call the Finance and Administration Committee meeting to order. Let the minute taker note that the, I think the same people are present. You, you did get Mike.
Yes.
Okay. So first, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the last Finance and Administration Committee meeting dated December 14th, 2017.
Second.
At 7:30 PM. That is my motion.
Second.
Great. So, we're actually gonna switch things around on the. Oh, all in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? That passes. So we're gonna switch things around on the agenda. We actually have a presentation by the Park District. Excuse me. I had asked that you hold questions until the end. As you guys know, we, we have a pretty lengthy CIP to go through after this, so let's let Matt go through his presentation and we'll hold questions till the end. Floor's yours, Matt, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Matthew Allman, representing the Wood Dale Park District, also in attendance in the audience, is two of our elected officials to serve on the Joint City Park Committee that was just recently formed on projects that we could potentially collaborate and work on. My goal tonight is to give you a update and information PowerPoint on our White Oaks Project. As you may recall, it was before you to present this concept plan back in April. I left that meeting with the sense that the council was very enthusiastic about the project and what it could bring to the community and how it could benefit everyone, and that the city wanted to be a participant in some form or fashion, and hopefully tonight I can address your questions and give you some more updated information to work with. I'm gonna try to be fairly brief, knowing that you have a long agenda and a lot to work on, and I can circle back to any of the illustrations or the data that's gonna be provided tonight, but I'll try to take about 10 minutes to, to give you a little bit of the story of what's going on with White Oaks. What you see on the screen right now is the concept plan that was presented last April. There has been some modifications to it, nothing of any huge magnitude, mainly in reference to the building that's sited where the cabin is now. It's important to have goals with any project, this is no different. Our goal here is, well, first of all, that we want to follow and take the, the lead from our comprehensive system-wide master plan that we performed back in 2015, and this is just a component of that plan, that we want to redevelop the park site so that it can be used for both passive and active uses to benefit the community at large, and in particular, especially today with obesity and other health-related issues that we're facing as a nation, we want to make sure that we're good stewards in making sure that our parks are developed so that people can use them to help lead more healthy lives. We also want to protect the natural environment of the park. It's probably one of our most beloved and beautiful parks because of the flora and fauna and the woods that are there, so we want to make sure we do stewardship of that. We do have some buildings on the site that we've done programming historically over the years. The cabin no longer can serve that purpose, so we want to see a new building that's welcoming and can not only be programmed, but could provide rental and revenue. We want to develop the infrastructure to bring Edge Adventures to the site, which we'll talk a little bit about, and then we also feel that this is kind of a great entryway into the community when you come from the south and head north in Wood Dale Road. It's one of the first things you see, and I think it can make a great statement of why Wood Dale is such a special place. Project background, this is a little redundant for all of you, but we did our master plan, it calls for renewal of our system-wide, and we can't afford to do everything at once, so we're working systematically through each of our parks. This site is definitely underutilized by the community, we just don't see the activity that a site of this size and nature should get use, so we want to rejuvenate it. The concept plan developed after research and community input led to what you're seeing tonight and saw back in April. Edge Adventures brings a unique, special, and healthy activity to Wood Dale, and we want to be able to capture that, and the plan allows for that. And we've done a lot of homework since April, and before that, we've done a site survey, we've done wetland delineations, we've done tree inventories, we've done a cabin assessment, and these are just some of the examples of the due diligence, and obviously it costs money, but it's important to, to make a solid plan. This is a little bit of the past history timeline and the forward-moving history that you see here. Where we're at right now is the, towards the bottom. We see this cabin remediation taking place in the spring if everything works forward. We see the site being developed and the building being built this year, and we potentially see the challenge course opening sometime, probably next June, if everything falls into place as we hope it, it can. That's the site back in 2015, pretty much looks like that today. When we had our public work sessions, we held focus groups and we also held a number of community meetings, so these were some of the things that stood out and that people were concerned about. It's not very inviting, the dog area and the, the dog park use is problematic, the layout is dysfunctional, people don't realize that even there's trails there to some extent. A store cabin is in very bad condition, and the woods are overgrown with invasives. The wetlands limit the use and what we can do, and we have to find ways to work with what the wetlands give us, and it's just an eyesore. And the programming opportunities are limited based on what's there today. So, the plan calls for to restore the woods over time and to bring invasive, bring out the invasive species and bring in more natural with, through spring ephemerals and understory growth, to improve with flowering trees and shrubs, to make it a more inviting place to stroll and walk and to run and go through, to add more pathways to really open up the vistas and views and get people into the park, to put a Spartan course in, to obviously get people a way that they can be healthy, these mud runs and all these other type of new activities that are coming into vogue and, and quite honestly are the hot programs right now, this would be a way to do that. We also feel that just put things for people to see and, and to use the natural environment to create artwork, and to continue some of the past programs and activities that we've historically supported, including our Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts having camping and activities on the site. Edge Adventures came to us about two years ago with the proposal to bring a aerial challenge course. It's basically a custom ropes course in the trees, can be anywhere from 16 to 60 feet in the air based on the tree count. It's, participants choose their own self-guided trails, there's lots of obstacles that you have to deal with, safety, and there are a number of vendors who are providing these type of amenities, but we feel they have the best safety protocol program. The course in terms of the design is setback from the homes and respect the residents that live there, and we want to provide a healthy benefit to the community, and with And we want to provide a healthy benefit to the community, and with the teen population and the youth population, everybody loves video games, everybody loves being inside, but we need to find ways to get people back outside, using the environment, being healthy. And this is something that is very popular and growing in its popularity nationwide. It's been in Europe for twenty years, but we're behind the curve on that. They work to protect the environment in terms of the way they design and build these facilities, and it's a unique opportunity to bring to Wooddale. There's only one other type of facility in the entire Chicagoland market. I think in about twenty years, you're gonna see them all over. We'd like to be first. This is an example of what it looks like. I think it connotates different things in people's minds, but if you see it firsthand, it blends into the environment. It's very exciting, and it's a challenge. It's a physical challenge. It's not so much just to get up there and have fun, although that is the byproduct, but it's just a physical challenge, and it really taxes individuals. But there'll be courses that can be accommodating people of different ages and different physical abilities, so just because you're not a Arnold Schwarzenegger or a Rock, you'd be able to participate. This is the main location area or zone that it's spec'd for. The cabin is due to be demolished. We currently are working with a firm to put bid specs together for remediation of the asbestos and other materials in there, and then to remove it and make room for a new facility. We definitely need a facility on this site. Programming is very important to the site. It's very important to the health and well-being of the community, and the cabin provided that for many years, but it no longer can do that. So, in brainstorming with our staff, we feel that it can not only be a base camp for Edge Adventures, and that's one of their requirements, they have to place to do point-of-sale and operate out of. We feel we can use rentals on this site so that we can co-work with Edge Adventures. We see before-and-after-school programs and care with Oakwood School being so close. Camp programming, like we've been doing out there, and could enhance and build upon. And then also other recreational, physical, mental health classes for adults in all ages. As you see here, the site of the new building, offset a little bit from the original concept plan, close to utilities to keep the construction cost down, close to support Edge Adventures, and also be a viewpoint when you enter or you drive by the park site. This is kind of the overlay of the site plan with the building and a little bit of a viewpoint of what the building would look like. We work with an architect who wanted to help us capture the essence of the site and the woods, to make it very natural and to fit in with the site, but also be built and constructed in a way that we used materials that obviously would keep maintenance costs down and emphasize the natural elements of the site. Here's some renderings that show various different angles and views. The original building concept was about eighteen hundred square feet. As a result of board input, as well as joint city park input, we've added about four hundred square feet, so we could accommodate a few more people and have more restroom capacity. So right now, it's about two thousand three hundred square feet approximate size. This is a floor plan. If you see here, this is the Edge Adventures component, storage, point-of-sale, so people come in off the parking lot. This is where they would get their equipment, and then they would do their sale for Edge Adventures. This is the entrance to the building with a vestibule for climate control, a display area, because we know that with the cabin going away, there's various elements of the site and of the building that we want to carry forward, so we want to put exhibits there and things to capture the history of the cabin. There'll be basically just a area corridor here, restroom for men, restroom for women. The original plan only had one stall. This expands it by two. And then you would open up into this big space, which would be the collective assembly area where we could accommodate programs, activities, rentals, along with a smaller room with a devisable wall, and then doors that go out onto a patio area which could extend the use. This would all be glass, so obviously gets a great view of the park and the beauty and splendor of it. We took very seriously the environmental and the environmental stewardship, so we did an exercise to look at ways that we could make this environmentally sound facility. These are the things we looked at. Obviously, at the end of the list, the strategies that we felt were looked at but couldn't be afforded, such as wind injury, gyrothermal, but we do have stormwater harvesting capacities, LED fixture usage and things of that sort. I won't go over each and every one, but we did the due diligence to make sure we're environmentally steward. This is the site plan with phasing. The Park District doesn't have the funds currently, although we are issuing one-point-five million dollars in GO bonds based on the retirement of some debt that we had this past year to help afford this. But we're about able to do a fund next year, about half the cost of the project, so that's why we're obviously in conversation with the city. But the plan is to phase it in if we had to do it all on our own, with the first phase being basically focusing on the infrastructure for Edge Adventures, the building, and the areas more to the west other than the dog park. This is the development cost, but real quick, before we go to that, can we do the modeling viewpoint of the building? I don't know if IT can pull that up, because I think that gives you a really feel for what the building is gonna be like. Our architect put this together to help you visualize. Those big round things in the corner are cisterns where we can do water collection. You're now seeing the side where you, the parking lot is, so this would be the west side of the building. You're coming into, obviously, the point-of-sale where Edge Adventures. There'd be this walkway to take you to the main entrance of the building, with Edge Adventures being to the left, and they have a dedicated space. This would be the community-based space, vestibule that you'll enter, and then you come into the main entry lobby where the exhibit, display area would be. Restroom straight ahead. This is all done with natural materials. There would be like no carpet. It should be very easy to maintain, very low maintenance. This is the outdoor picnic area where we could have community events. This is the assembly area, shown at full capacity. Obviously, we could reduce with the table and chair count, so there could be other types of activities in there. Just saw the little bit of the substation area space for programs where you could devise into two workable spaces. There's your cistern over in the corner that you see, collection of the water from the roof. Come back around, and you can see this kind of wall that protects the view from the maintenance building. You can see the high windows to obviously bring natural light in, use of wood material and underdecking, and then go back out to this, this area here which walks and leads you through. Windows all along that side. Okay, we can go back to the PowerPoint, please? So this is the rough, and you know, these are estimated costs. You know, working with my board and working with my staff, budgeting and cost development is a science. It takes time. You have to get more information, and we're still on the concept level. You know, we've engaged architects to start to put together more specific and workable numbers, but right now, Phase A is about two-point-six million. Total project cost is about four million. You can see Phase A is really the building, the cabin demolition, required studies that we have to do. Right now, we're engaged in a parking and traffic study. You've also got the loopwalk, children's discovery area that's part of this. Then you go into the second phase, the dog-friendly area and gazebo. One of the questions I always get is, why is the dog area so expensive? Well, the big reason is, is because there's a lot of infrastructure work with putting in the excavation to protect the trees in the dog park area, putting in new fencing, and in particular, putting in crushed granite that is the best surfacing for the health of the site and the health of the dogs. Phase C is some of the trail work and getting into the, you know, two-thirds of, into the park. And then Phase D is really cleaning out the invasive species and also adding new ephemerals and species and putting in the new, the trail. This is a little bit more detail on the budget. You can see at the bottom right that there's about a two-point-two million dollar shortfall based on what the Park District can pledge at this point, and that's why we would phase. But again, these numbers are gonna be modified. There's contingencies built in there, there's assumptions built in here, and things that, obviously, as we develop more specifics for the plan and what we ultimately want to end up with, we can refine and hopefully get those numbers down. We always like to overestimate it first and then, you know, deliver the project in below that. I'm happy to answer any questions. I'm excited about this project. I'm excited about being here, and I realize there's a lot to digest, so I'm at your beck and call. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. So we'll entertain some questions before we move on to the CIP. Our end goal is not to make a, we don't have to make a decision today. We'll entertain some questions, and then we'll move on to the CIP. Go ahead, Alderman. Roy Wesley.
I have some finance questions for Brad.
Brad, could you come up?
What is the dollar amount that we take in on hotel tax, tourist tax? Per year?
Brad? From memory, approximately three-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars.
Per year? How much do we spend of that per year? Off the projects that we do now? Prairie Fest?
Yeah, I mean the.
Gala, whatever.
Tourism fund generally, accounting for all revenue streams and expenses, typically runs pretty much at a break-even between the Prairie Fest, Prairie Fest revenues, expenses, some other things. There are a couple of projects falling off of the tourism fund this year, so there would be some surplus projected as of now. We haven't gotten it fully into the operating budget yet.
Alderman, Roy Wesley, you have a follow-up?
Yes.
Some available funding in there.
On a project like this, where would you pull from? We're looking at, what, four years out on this? Four years over the period? Matt?
Go ahead.
Um, you know, how long it takes to develop really depends on the funding.
What is your goal?
Ideally, to do it all in one swoop and get it done, but I think the Park District, you know, was committed to Phase One, and Phase Two maybe in a few years, and Three, Four, we could go out a decade or more. I mean, Central Park is another example. We have another phase or two for that, but right now, we can only do, you know, what we can do and that's, we want to have plans, but funding. One thing I didn't mention is, we do want to pursue grants. We don't have any identified. We don't know if we can get any, but I think it's important to try.
Do you have a follow-up?
I do, because.
Last question, please.
Well, we're coming back around then. Where would this project come from? We're good?
Go ahead, Brett.
Based upon the numbers that were presented here and kind of the volume and the capacity of the numbers, the initial way we'd kind of been working some of the numbers in would, that they would be included in the CIP, the capital plan.
Alderman Eugene Wesley, your question?
I got one more.
Okay. You're gonna have to wait till it go around a second time. Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Man, I just have a couple of questions to share on this building here. The building, is there gonna be cameras put on those buildings?
Matt?
At this point, we're not at the stage of putting all that specific detail together, but in discussions, we feel that we want to put some cameras in that area to protect it, just like we did with Central Park. And we found the cost isn't that extensive, so I think that is very likely.
I would take the class.
Do you have a follow-up?
Yeah, I have two more. The Venture Park, who's installing that?
The aerial challenge course would be funded and built entirely by Edge Adventures. And it's about eight-hundred thousand to a million-dollar investment on their part.
Okay, there was a couple of questions here last time you came. I dug up my notes. What was the final price tag that they gave you for the people, Wooddale residents, to use it? And what is gonna be the revenue that they're possibly bringing in to you guys?
In our discussions with them up to this point, their pricing, you know, is always a little bit, originally, they were talking about forty-nine dollars to access the park, but now they're down in the three that they're operating in Indiana at about a thirty-nine-dollar price point for a two-hour experience. However, they're going to have mechanisms to make it more affordable, both in their system as well as we're negotiating as part of an operation agreement, some discounts and some ways for our residents to access it at discounts. Examples would be a scholarship program that they would help provide that we would manage. Another example is having four to six community days where we could provide twenty-five, thirty-four percent discounts. There would be charitable cause engagement programs that they would work with us on, but many of those things are negotiable. I think I answered your questions.
Any other questions?
No, I don't have any of that this time.
Thank you. Alderman, Mike Sizmarzki?
Hey, Matt, you mentioned Central Park. You still have two phases on that?
Correct.
How far out are you on finishing those two phases?
Those aren't identified at this point.
What about the financials on that? You know, were you short on that, or you covered that?
Yeah, and you're catching me off guard, because I don't remember. I've had so many numbers running through my head the past couple of days. We're in budget two, but, you know, we're looking at, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars. The big one would be the splash pad, which is, which is pretty costly to put in. But I'm sorry that I can't give anything more specific, but I can definitely email that information to Jeff.
Appreciate it.
Any other questions?
No.
Any else? Okay, I'll ask my questions now. So I guess the first question, I think you were alluding to it, but I don't know if you got to it, but you have similar facilities in Indiana that are run, or they do, not you guys. What is revenue? Annual revenue they pull through? Do you have those numbers?
I don't have those numbers. I can tell you that their first year, they were meeting their projections, but there isn't, but they've seen a forty percent growth in one park and seventy percent growth in the other park since they opened.
What were their projections? You said they meant their projections, but we don't know a number. What projections did they meet?
I think, I think if I'm not mistaken, they're expecting to get the return on their investment in somewhere between five to seven years.
How long have they been open?
Two. Two in one site and one in another.
Okay. So that was the question for Alderman Jacob, my questions. Do you know how many park districts there are in the city of Wooddale?
Three, I believe.
Okay. So, if I could ask my colleagues up here, those that have residents that are serviced by more than one park district, could you raise your hand? No one else has? Okay, okay, so about half? And then Alderman, Alderman Jacob as well. I guess my first question is, I know I've asked you multiple times and I've asked other park districts, especially Bensonville, to kind of work together. Has there been anything that you guys have done collaboration-wise with them on this project?
No, not on this project.
You know, secondly, you talked about resident fees. Probably the biggest thing I get from my folks that blows them away, especially because the majority of them pay a huge amount of money in taxes, is the idea of paying non-resident fees when they come to a Wooddale Park facility. How will pricing be dictated, or that be dictated by Edge Adventures?
Pricing will be dictated by Edge Adventures. There won't be a residency or a non-residency fee, but obviously, you know, the hope would be that if the city was a partner, we would enter in an intergovernmental agreement, which would potentially, I think, and would suggest, have provisions that Wooddale residents would be defined by, by the city as opposed to just the park district. Not strictly the park district, but the park district and the city combined.
Okay, okay.
So that if we did have, say, community days where there would be a discount to use of the park, then based on the parameters being that any resident of the city of Wooddale or any resident of the Park District of Wooddale could access that discount.
My final, I guess, point would be, this is a great project, and we definitely want to help you guys. I just hope you guys can understand from our viewpoint that we have multiple park districts. We have to service, service rather, and so to offer this much money to a set of residents could do a lot of things, but I know you have at least my commitment to work with you guys, so I should make that comment, appreciate it. Round two?
Thank you.
Alderman Sizmarzki?
Very small. I don't know if it's a question for waiting for legal or not. Would it be possible to do a three-tier pay or talk to them? We do have residents that are unincorporated Wooddale that don't pay into it, but they shouldn't be punished being outside of our city realm. Maybe they pay just like a middle wage.
Unincorporated.
Yeah, the unincorporated. They don't get the resident rate though. Yeah, within our boundaries. Just something to look at.
Legal questions.
Right, that's what I said, I think it's for legal, but we'll wait. Thanks.
Okay. Alderman Roy Wesley, I know you had a question?
Matt, isn't your, isn't Wooddale unincorporated? Don't they have Wooddale Park District boundaries unincorporated?
Yeah, some, there's.
So that would fall under Park District boundaries? That was, my question was, could you, could we go back to that number one, where, how much shortfall you are? Two-point-two. So, I, is the Park District willing to go into? So I, is the park district willing to go into a low-interest loan with I task a bank if we need to come on to that number, if the city comes into it too?
Sorry, I'd prefer that come, come through me for that loan. Why, why would they be tied to a partner?
I said I task a bank.
I know, but why, why is partner? Why is that relevant?
Not as a partner, as a loan.
But why that bank? What's the relevancy of that bank?
Because our, our bank and the community bank, you want to use Wintrust? You want to use Wintrust? Fine, use Wintrust, use whatever bank you want. You want to use Randy Messina Bank? Use that.
I'm open to it. It'll be low-interest loans. Go ahead, Matt.
I think, and I don't want to speak on behalf of the board, because the board ultimately makes the decision on all these things, but once we kind of take the next step and know where maybe the city's philosophical support lies or funding support lies, then I think the staff has to get together and do the work to determine how we can afford this, how we stage this and phase this, and what other partners we could potentially look at that would make sense and be, you know, not harming our operational abilities through our budgets. So I don't think at this point, you know, we're going to close our eyes or our opportunities to anybody who could potentially help in this, but we have to do it in a logical and in the appropriate order, and right now, it's probably a little premature, but I think options are beyond what we're talking about in this room or out there.
My whole thing on this is I'm looking at two point two, and I like the project. How do I get to that? Or it's not suffering the city in any which way, not suffering the park district in any which way, unless Randy Messina Bank wants to give all the money, which I don't think that's going to happen.
Communion money.
But we're looking at hotel tax that we could pull from if that's the case. We've got three hundred thousand there. I'm not saying use all of it, but I'm just trying to figure out a way how to get to that two point one sooner than later.
So just for the sake of this conversation, right, I think our end goal here, Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, is, I think you mentioned it, do we have enough philosophical support to move forward, to agree to partner with the park district today at probably an undetermined amount, but to at least make sure that they have our, you know, support to partner with them? Is that accurate, Matt? Just looking for-
Yeah, I think, you know, to continue to move forward for the park district standpoint, if we have to do it independently, then we're going to take, obviously, the necessary steps and actions to do that. If we know that we have a philosophical partner to work out the details and the funding, then that, that obviously broadens the ability to move this project faster and farther than it would if we didn't have that.
Mayor, go ahead.
Regarding the money, so. They have phases. Doesn't have to be done all in one year. We're going to talk about the CIP, and we're going to get into all kinds of details on money. That's when we start getting down and drilling down into what we can't and want to, or want to afford. I mean, everybody likes a project. I think you guys are on board with helping out. Question is the money. I believe we've had a couple, couple of conversations with Brad already on this, and we should go through the CIP and have the discussions.
All right. So I'd like to make a motion to provide philosophical support at this point to partner with the park district at an undetermined amount pending further finance discussion.
Circle.
We have a second. Mike? Alderman Sizmarzki? Any questions? Okay, Alderman Eugene Wesley?
I just have one question. Matt, what, do you have a deadline that you have to commit to this project? Was there a deadline if you sign on this dotted line by a certain time? This is bottom line, the builder's building, this is the money that you need. Is there a deadline that you guys are trying to meet to? I mean, I see the, I mean, is there contracts thrown up right now saying that we're going forward this, this money?
At this point, no. There are only two targets that we'll need to be concerned about.
And what?
Immediately. One is bonds. Obviously, when we issue GO bonds, we have a commitment, I think, of three years that we have to expend the funds, so, and don't quote me on that, but Brad might even know, but that we, you know, we can't sit on that money and forever. There's an intended use. Secondly, is Edge Adventures, the target that they want, we would like, is to bring them and have them operating next summer. In order to do that, a lot of things have to happen before that. So, you know, we have to start making decisions, we have to start working to make that happen, which is what we're doing. But at some point, if we know we don't have the funding, we're going to have to alter our game plan. But at this point, we're moving to support Phase One.
So, okay, I think you answered part of my question, but just as a summary before we take a roll call, if there was no support that we could provide, it sounds like Phase A is something you guys are on board and ready to roll with, whether we say yea or nay, or whatever that is.
Phase A, but scaled back, because it's more than-
Okay. And if we don't provide any type of support to help expedite, or the other phases B, C, and D idea and number of years it might take to finish off?
You know, there's a lot of things that right now the park district's examining, and so a lot of that will be based on where those examinations take us with our other facilities in operation. So, you know, it's, there's a lot of assumptions and a lot of things that I just, I'm not able to forecast.
This is one of other parks, though, that are part of your comprehensive plan, right?
Yeah, and you know, since we're small-staffed and we're small, you know, we can only do it at the pace that we can handle, but the board is committed to other projects and other parks, but this one has been given the priority attention because of the potential that, what it can do to serve the community and better, the community in many ways.
True. So we have a motion, we have a second. Do roll call. Eileen, is it okay if we do a formal roll call, Mayor?
Sure.
Okay, go ahead, Eileen.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley? Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarzki?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes. Thank you, Matt, for your time.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate your support.
Thank you, board members for partnering with us.
Thank you.
So we are going to move on to the second component of this, which is the CIP. May I request a five-minute potty break?
Potty break, really?
Okay. Potty break. Recession, excuse me. Formal terms, recess. We will, seven forty, please be back. Seven forty-one, actually.